Okay, we will call the meeting to order. At this time, I will turn over the meeting to Nick to take care of running things this evening.
Thank you, Chair. All right, Commissioners, the second agenda item is the approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes. Are there any identified changes that need to be made prior to the Commission taking formal action to approve? Okay, as you see fit, you may take formal action to approve.
This is Commissioner Urban, and I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Commissioners Urban and Hessel. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. All right, I'm sure everyone is here this evening because the Planning Commissioner bylaws do identify that we do need to elect annually Chair and Vice Chair. And so, I was anticipating, staff was anticipating that we'd have a full Commission this evening, but we do have two absences. So, the options for the Commission are number one, that you are able to take formal action this evening to appoint a Chair and Vice Chair, should you want to. Or if you'd like to table it for a future meeting, that would also be just fine as well.
Yeah, I think waiting until the other two members are here would be great, and also just understanding the level of commitment that each of us have before we make a decision as far as who's going to be most often here to run a meeting.
Yes. So, might I suggest it is appropriate for the Planning Commissioners outside of a Planning Commission meeting to talk with each other about who would be interested in this position. I'm happy to join those conversations as needed, to talk about commitments and roles, responsibilities, pardon me, as needed. I think the Commissioner Irvine nailed probably the largest issue is we need, your Chair needs to be regularly available. And if not, the Chair needs to be also somewhat available as well to participate. So, that to me seems like the most important factor. You as Planning Commissioners have participated in many hearings. I think you can be coached and showing how to lead a meeting as needed. So, I have full faith in every one of you, should any of you want to step up in any of these positions. So, is it the, I'm sensing the desire to table it to another meeting? Okay. We'll go ahead and schedule it for the next meeting unless I hear otherwise from maybe Chair Hessel, if you need more time or otherwise.
Do we need a motion or?
No, it's fine, yeah. Okay. All right, with no action on that, we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is the Field of Daisy's Doggy Play Care Conditionally Use and Home Occupation. Files number, conditionally use 23-1 and HO 23-1. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. And for the first time, I will read the quasi-judicial hearing statement, and we'll see how well I do. So, this is a little wordy. Okay, thank you all for attending this evening. Again, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. This is the time and place set for the hearing on planning files number CU 23-1 and HO 23-1. The hearing is now called to order at 6:31 PM. The hearing will proceed as follows. First, staff will present the staff report. Next, the applicant will present its application and supporting evidence. Any interested persons will then be provided an opportunity to present testimony or evidence in support that is neutral or that is in opposition. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. Staff will provide closing comments. Any party may request the written record remain open to respond to testimony presented at the hearing. At the conclusion of this hearing, the Planning Commission may either close the public hearing and deliberate towards a decision, or close the public hearing and defer deliberations towards a decision at a date and time certain, or continue the public hearing at a date and time certain. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed to the applicable criteria or any other approval criteria you believe to be applicable. Matters unrelated to the application are not pertinent to the Planning Commission's decision in these proceedings. Failure on the part of any person to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the Planning Commission and parties to this proceeding an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the City Council and the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Commissioners must disclose any ex parte contract, including site visits, site visits, bias, or conflicts of interest. Does any Commissioner have any, pardon me, anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of and why, whether, pardon me, please state the nature of same and whether you intend to participate in these proceedings. Okay, hearing none. Does any party wish to challenge any member of the hearing's body based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? All right, Commissioner, I'm not seeing any of the record reflect as such. Staff will now deliver the staff report. This evening Associate Planner, Flot Mataha, will provide that for us.
Thank you, Nick. The applicant has requested a conditionally use in home occupation for a dog play care business to be operated on 721 Southeast Grizzly Road. The property is zoned moderate density residential, or R1, which identify home occupation as a conditionally use and require approval from the Planning Commission. The Community Development Department has notified all property owners within 200 feet from the subject property. We also notified the developing team, and we published a public hearing notice in Madras Pioneer. This is consistent with the requirement for public hearing in the Madras Development Code. The development has not received any letters or comments opposing the proposed development. However, the department received one phone call and one letter supporting the applicant. The proposed land use decision identified the recommended finding and decisions for which the applicant has the burden of proof to demonstrate compliance with the approval criteria. The staff has reviewed the proposed applications and has made its finding. Staff stated as a condition of approval that the property owner should take unnecessary precautions to minimize noise and orders from the dog to comply with standards for granting conditionally use. I also would like to note an error in the staff report. In the motion action, stated that the City Council will approve the conditionally use in home occupation, and instead, the Planning Commission is the decision body. Thus, I move the Planning Commission to approve the proposed conditionally use in home occupation based on the finding proposed. Thank you.
Point of clarification, it's a staff recommendation to approve. All right. Does the Commission have any questions for staff? Wonderful. We will now hear from the applicant. Would the applicant please come forward? We will now receive public testimony. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record. All testimony shall be directed to the Planning Commission and not to the applicant, staff, or any members of the audience. If you have a question for another party, please direct your question to the Planning Commission Chair, and the Chair will determine whether a response from other party is appropriate. Please keep your testimony concise and relevant to the issues before us this evening. It's perfectly acceptable and encouraged to indicate that you agree with the points made by another party instead of reiterating the point. Testimony will be received in the following order. Persons speaking in support of the application, persons who wish to provide neutral testimony, persons who wish to provide opposition testimony. Finally, we will hear rebuttal argument from the applicant to the testimony provided. With that said, you may proceed.
My name is Moses Talamante. I live at 721 Southeast Grizzly Road. We are here to ask that we change to conditionally use for our doggy daycare. The area that we live in and have moved here one year ago to Madras from Thailand, we feel is a perfect place, spot, location here in Madras to open this doggy daycare and get approval from the city to run it as a full-fledged business to where we can maintain a moderate-sized play care for the dogs to where they're able to run around, get the energy out, and have an active, fun time for the dogs throughout the day. We also are asking for approval to board the dogs during the night. We have many friends that are dog lovers like we are. We feel that we can maintain no more than 15 dogs on the property, and something that we want, you know, to offer to the Madras community where we can have a place for them to take their dogs whenever they go on vacation or holidays, a place that is fun, a place where the dogs get exercise. We do realize that one of the big questions was, well, how do you keep the dogs quiet? Well, that's through being with them constantly. So, this is something that my wife and my children take full, something that they love to do, playing with the dogs, being outside with the dogs, not leaving the dogs alone, because we feel when you leave the dogs alone, that's when the dogs want to bark, act up, act out. So, we're all the time with them throughout the day so that we don't have any kind of issues or anything with the dogs, and we can maintain the activeness with them, whether it snows, rains, or shines. Something that we would want to do as well is maybe grow a little bit, maybe put an indoor, small place for them for the winter time so that way they don't run into rain and mud and snow so much. I mean, the dogs enjoy the snow, but for us, it's kind of hard to keep the house clean. We feel as a family that we could do this as a family business where we could teach our boys how to be responsible, taking on also their chores of being part of the business. We feel that we can give something back to Madras community to where there is a, you know, a happy place for them. We have also considered, you know, what do we do with the actual feces? We know how to dispose of it in the correct way, where, you know, we're not, we pick it up every day. I mean, day in, day out, we're professionals at that. And, you know, we ask that, you know, this hopefully makes a dream come true for us.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant before we proceed on?
Hi, I'm Commissioner Urban, and my general question is what type of licensing or permitting process do you have to go through in order to have this business be up and running? Do you need qualifications from, you know, some type of animal authority, or how does that work?
I have looked into this, and the license here is, and you don't need any education or anything like that as far as like for dogs and stuff like that. It's nice to have, but it's not required in the state of Oregon. And from what I understand, it's just a business license, and keeping it small is key, you know? It's more about quality than quantity for us. And so, I think that there's not really, you know, as far as I'm aware of, something that we would have to get besides the business license.
And as far as your property, is it currently fenced?
Yes. We have provided a fence throughout the whole entire property, so the dogs can run wherever. Whereas, through our time with the dogs and playtime, we noticed that the dogs really just want to be with us. No matter where we go, you know, as long as we're outside, that's where the dogs want to be. If we go inside, we realize it gets cold, which we do get cold, and we go inside, and the dogs really want to be just wherever we are at. And we have our house situated in a way where the dogs are maintained in a certain spot to where they just don't have free run of the house. And we can maintain the cleanliness on, they're mostly in the kitchen. And then we have a door that closes off, and we keep them in there. We get warmed up ourselves, and then we, you know, take a break. And, yeah, but the whole property itself is completely fenced off. It's not a high fence, so I don't think that the dogs feel like they have to, you know, they're enclosed. They kind of feel like they're free, so, and it's a big enough property. You know, 4.74 acres is plenty big for the dogs to run around and play in. You're welcome, come.
Any other comments before we proceed on to neutral?
This is Commissioner Kendall. You said that you would be with the dogs continuously, so you don't have jobs outside of the home at this time?
I do. I work at Basic Solutions in Redmond, so I work full-time there as a project manager. So, this is mostly a business, you know, or something that we would want to do for my wife and the boys. And they homeschool, so the boys are...
You need to turn your mic on.
Yeah, so the boys are homeschooled, so this is part of the school thing. And teaching them to be responsible, to take care of the dog, and how we also teach them to train the dogs and the way they talk to the dog, and also to command them, you know, some of the sound or some of the action that they add to the dog. Some of the dog doesn't like that, but some like it, so they have to learn to the dog to love them, all of them. Either they, some kind of dog, maybe they don't like it, but because this is the family business.
Thank you. With regard to her question on licensing, because you do board the dogs overnight or for several days, is there additional kennel licensing that you have to do with that?
We can look into this, and we'll make sure that if, you know, we get everything that's properly, you know, part of it, we will do whatever it takes in order to get, you know, official throughout. And this is, we don't want to do it, you know, half. We want to go into this completely and truly, and something that, you know, we want all of the neighbors to be happy, we want everybody to be happy, and especially we want the government as well. And that's one of the reasons that we want to make sure that we're doing it in the correct way, you know?
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll proceed to proponent testimonies. So, at this time, if anyone is a proponent of the proposal, you would want to come up. It looks like the gentleman here in the white shirt is first, so please come on up, have a seat, state your name and address for the record, and provide your remarks to the Commission.
My name is Jack Gallagher, 777 Southeast Grizzly Road, which is adjoining to the property. I have been able to witness and watch. I walk down the road and get the mail every day, and I'm always seeing them out. I would say everything that Moses just told you is correct. Those dogs are never outside without a human with them. I've never seen them alone. I see them exercising them all the time, they're getting good exercise several times a day. They clean up the property. It's, it's great. I have no reservations about favoring them to have a doggy daycare in my neighborhood.
Because you do live next door, what about the noise?
I have never heard a dog bark from their property. Other ones, but not from their property. So...
Thank you.
Good question. That's about all I want to say, I don't know if I can say much more. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, appreciate your time. Anyone else like to make a statement in support? Come on forward, please.
Is this working? Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Nick Korchuk, and we live at 891, so we're adjacent to the daycare as well. And we just wanted to agree with everything that Jack just said and just add to it. We've never heard any, any noise. It's actually, it's a very well-run operation. It's an attractive business, and we feel it adds a character to the community. We really like seeing it there, so we just wanted to mention that while we're here.
Anyone else? Man here in the front?
Good evening, I'm Ted Hereoff, and I live at 1031 Southeast Daisy Court. I could almost see their property from mine. My dog loves to run, and thank goodness that the play care is there because she can do that all she want. They're very well-supervised. Moe and Bump and family are very responsible. It's an incredible place to take your dog, I highly recommend it. I think it's a very good service for the community. When, when I first took my dog there, there wasn't very many dogs that were, that were coming, but word got around that the, it's doggy heaven there. And there was, were people that, that worked during the day that had no place to take their dogs. Or maybe they did, but other places were pretty expensive for most people. And it's very reasonable there, and they have gained... A lot of people found out and now bring their dogs, and they're happy with that. Teachers, I know that, you know, they don't want to leave their dog at home during the day, or others that have jobs, and they don't want to leave their dogs in the backyard or in their apartment or something. So, that's, that's been wonderful. I've seen lots of happy people, lots of happy dogs. And it's about the best, the best-run daycare for dogs I've ever seen, bar none. And they're, it's a great place. So, I would highly recommend that, that you approve of it. I hope you do, and, because I think it's, it's quite a benefit to our community. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ted. So, woman here in the blue vest, why don't you come up, and then we'll ask for people online to share.
I wasn't sure if I was going to make it, so I wanted to be sure. My name's Mary Lou Welch, I live at 501 Southeast Sagavionna Court. To the City Council, we are the Welch family. We've only recently moved here to Madras from Portland, and we're writing this letter in support of Moses and, sorry, Bump, in regard to the Field of Daisy's Doggy Play Care, to obtain and maintain the rights to open their business at a larger level. The family has made a great deal of difference with the Madras community and are a vital part of many local lives. We met this family only a few months ago, and they went out of their way to make us feel welcomed. They also interact with our rottweiler, whom many are simply afraid due to his breed. The business they run is essential, and many reply, or rely upon them for their respective animals. It is affordable, which many of us in this town know is critical. It is close, so there's no long distance going to Redmond or Bend and getting the same service. It's family-owned and operated. They are the American dream incarnate. And finally, this business is more than just a place to bring a dog for the day. It is a community with values interwoven into everything they do and/or attempt. We ask not only as members of this city, but as the, one of the families who rely on daisies, that they be granted the permits and licenses to require to legitimize all their hard work and sacrifice to bring this incredible business to the city of Madras. I have also, everything that has been mentioned, it is a safe place for our animals. They are not left alone. They are very well paid attention to, they separate them and do different activities. It's almost like having a child in daycare. They send us little videos, they send us, you know, pictures. It's, it's truly a great family to be involved with. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. All right, I understand that Monica Torres online would like to make some remarks to the Commission in support.
Hi, do I have to turn on my video or just my mic?
You can do just as you are right now, that works just fine.
Okay. Hi, my name is Monica Torres, and I live at 841 Southwest Sunnyside Drive in Madras, Oregon. And we absolutely love, we have a lab, a one-year-old lab now, and she's been going to their doggy daycare since the summer. I work for High Desert ESD, and so I was stressing in the summer, when we're having summer school about leaving my dog in a crate and then coming and checking on her. So, for us, and then also my kids do sports, so for us, it has been a lifesaver. It is, I call their place Doggy Disneyland, it's a little Disney for doggies. They do send videos all the time. They treat our dogs like if, I mean, we see our dogs like children. But they take really good care of their animals, and every single time that you drop them off, they're always welcoming you with a smile, and it's like the family. They have become our family, and it's Cota second family. So, I really hope that, you know, they move forward with this planning for their business because they are an amazing asset to our community. And there are so many teachers that I refer to their daycare because it is such an amazing place. You get videos, and I'm almost in tears because it's such an amazing place. You get videos, you get pictures, you get, they treat your dog like it's their own dog, and they, it's like the best place to leave your, your dog. So, I really, really hope that, you know, they, you guys grant them the plans to move forward because they have been a blessing to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Is there anyone else online that would like to make some remarks to the Planning Commission in support of the proposal? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to... All right, hearing none, we'll move on to neutral testimony. Would anyone like to present any testimony neutral to the matter? All right, not seeing anyone here in the council chambers or online. We'll move on to testimony in opposition. Would anyone like to provide any testimony in opposition? Anyone online? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to applicant rebuttal testimony. I don't know that the applicant maybe needs to rebut anything since there's been a lot of support. But the applicant, if you have any additional remarks now would be the time to do that. All right, hearing none. All right. The commission now has three options. A, to close the, close the hearing now and deliberate towards a decision this evening. B, close the hearing or defer deliberation to a time and date certain. Or continue the public hearing to a time and date certain. How does the commission wish to proceed? I think we can close at this time. All right. So let the record reflect it. We'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to deliberations of the planning commission.
So Nick, this is just a question to show thinking, I guess. So I had previously lived close to a home that had a conditional use permit and the, when things began, they were great. And as time went on, things didn't go so great. So could you just kind of in general lay out if a conditional use is granted and let's say there's a problem with noise or things like that later on, what is the process for either filing a complaint or looking into that conditional use permit process at a later date?
Great question. I will be honest with you, when this application was filed, I had lots of concerns and the testimony, voluminous testimony and support was surprised to me because it's not something I anticipated. That said, the proposed decision includes a condition of approval that states the following. The property owner shall take all necessary precautions to minimize noise and odors from the dogs by eliminating dogs being outside on the property between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM and removing all feces on a regular basis to prevent accumulation of feces by disposing of them at the Box Canyon Transfer Station or obtaining regular trash removal service from Madras Sanitary Service. So the first part of the answer is, one, there's a condition of approval. Secondly, not ideal, but should there be a violation or alleged violation of the terms of this land use decision, it would be enforced through the development code. In that case, we would go through a process to adjudicate that. It's not something that would be pursued immediately because that's, there's not a lot of admittedly experience, I think for good reason, because we usually address these issues effectively in the land use decision. That said, I think the, the third element of the answer would be the city needs to respond to any concerns early on. And so if, if we're hearing concerns from a neighbor about a particular aspect of this business being operated, we would, we would conduct a site visit. We'd want to have a meeting with the property owner to really discuss the nature of that complaint and see how we could mitigate it. Again, enforcement is not a really an effective means of compliance. As my own personal, kind of professional ethic, you know, going to the, to the residents and having a conversation with the owners and the, and the caretakers of the business would probably be the most effective manner. I, I will tell you that, that I think this condition of approval requires them, when we say all necessary precautions, yes, that is somewhat subjective, but, but I also think it's sufficiently clear in terms of the time of day. So when staff developed this condition of approval, we, we referred to the city's noise ordinance in our development code. And there, in the state of Oregon, there are two ways to regulate noise. And the way we regulate noise is not by the decibel level. That's one way. The other is identifying the unnecessary noise. And part of that regulation or approach to regulating noise is to specify the time of day that you don't want that ruckus or unreasonable noise to be generated. And so 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM is that time of day, pardon me, time of night, to be clear, for which we're asking them to make sure that the dogs are not barking. In this case, you know, being outside is another component of the condition of approval. So practically speaking, operating the business, can the dog go outside between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM? Yes, they can. I think the intention here is not being left outside for long periods of time to where they may be exposed to extreme weather conditions or maybe not have, you know, food, water, or whatever care nurturing they need that's causing that behavior, likely barking or whatever that may be. So in summary, I think the condition of approval provides us the ability to get there. And if we need to do enforcement, we would first talk with the business owner before we proceed through the formal enforcement process. Yeah.
And this is Commissioner Kendall. When I was reading through some of the information on that, when you were talking about disposal of organic waste, that it would have to go to the, through the garbage company? Or to the, the?
Transfer station?
Yes, transfer station, thank you. When I was reading, is that a condition that the city requested? Because when I was reading through the information, I remember reading something about a compost place for the excrement?
I, I don't have that understanding, but we have preemptively imposed this condition of approval to make sure that it is disposed of either the county's approved waste transfer station, that being Box Canyon, Box Canyon Transfer Station, or through the sanitary service, which would ultimately take it to that location as well.
So that's their only options?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the reason for that is I'm concerned that with the number of dogs you have there, an option or the ability to compost it may be compromised just because of the sheer volume of that. I mean, this is the reality. So that's why we wrote the condition as it is.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure is that's one of the conditions you had placed on it versus going with what that had said. Okay, thank you. And the, and the family's good with that?
Any further discussion before the commission considers formal action? All right, you may proceed with formal action if and when you're ready. Would you, maybe staff, could you bring up a recommended motion for them as identified in the staff report?
This is Commissioner Irvin. I move to approve the conditional use permit as noted as file CU 231 and HO 231, Field of Daisy's Doggy Play Care Proposal, as presented.
Second? Thank you for calling for the second. I'm, I'm new to this designated role. All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Irvin and seconded by Chair Hessel. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We, we usually don't get home occupation and conditional use permits with this sort of attendance and testimony, so.
Sometimes when we see people in the audience, it's like, uh-oh. So thank you.
I don't know what you did other than operating a great business to get them here, but you, you deserve to be commended on another level. All right, commission, we do have one more agenda item, that's additional business. And Fawma, do you want to show us the schedule? I know that's a little hard to see, so what we're, you have a printed copy before you and so what staff's trying to do is recognize that the commissioners communicate and schedule things in different ways and means. And so we're looking for feedback to make sure that if we were to hand this out to you and, and perhaps if there was not a meeting, meaning it would be canceled or well in advance, that we would note that to be canceled, usually through, you know, like X through that date on the calendar, that that would be helpful for you. And then the other, the other component is, what else? How else can we, we help you?
I think just because I have, you know, a work calendar, a second work calendar, third calendar, that honestly, getting a meeting request that I could add to my calendar would be super helpful. So even if you just send out one with all of 2023, you don't need to go into 2024. And then as soon as you know that we're not going to have a hearing or even if you think it may be like a question mark, it would just be helpful to, to know that. I don't, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I definitely live by my Outlook calendar.
Yeah, so I think what, what staff is, is also saying is we're open, if we need to use a variety of methods that works for everyone, we're, we're happy with that. So we'll work to get this on people's calendars, should, should they use it, is what I like to say. And then if there's some other means, you know, we're, we're open to that feedback as well.
And for me too, and sorry, this may not work for everybody else, but if other people on the commission agree, a 6:30 start time would be better for me just because I usually get off of work at five and if I'm driving from Bend, it's easier to have a little bit of that extra time. Otherwise, I feel like I'm having to leave early and usually someone needs something from me right before I leave. So if, if other people could start at 6:30, I know that means that I could get here on time more often.
Yep, so our bylaws don't specify the time of day of the year to meet, okay? And so maybe Chair Hessel remembers when we moved it back from 7:00 PM. That was a little late. Yeah. And so.
I'm okay with that. I was gonna.
We moved to six because we were piggybacking a different meeting for a while or something. Yeah, so I have no opposition to 6:30. That'd be fine.
Yeah.
I don't either. As a matter of fact, I was gonna ask you if, if 6:30 would be better to make your life a little bit easier.
So what we'll do, Fawma, could you reach out to other two commissioners who are absent this evening and see if 6:30 may work? And if not, to worst case, for our next meeting, if we, if we can't get feedback from them, I don't want to change it on them and create confusion. So what I would probably like to do is maybe at our next meeting, schedule the discussion of the chair, the appointment of the chair and vice chair. And then also maybe under that same agenda item, discuss the meeting time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So for the meeting on the 19th, keep it at six?
Yes, if that's okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And if you're a little late, don't worry.
I was more than a little late tonight.
That's okay.
Life happens. Okay, so that's good guidance, the action items for staff. We'll put it on your calendar. And then we'll, we'll follow up with our two absent commissioners to confirm the 6:30. If we do move it to 6:30, if you'll please excuse us, we will remind you that it's 6:30, probably in a multiple varieties, just so you don't show up early or otherwise. But please forgive us. We're only trying to help and make sure that. Yeah, I appreciate that. But the, the last item is you have a deadline through the Oregon Ethics Commission to file your annual statement of economic interest.
I already did mine.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. So if you could also follow up with Baker and Eter, Fawma, that'd be great. We did, we did have a magistrate development commissioner that didn't. One time, and there was a $5,000 fine that we against him.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it took him driving to Salem and he did, they, they did have the good argument that the email changed, that he filed with the state to what they, to his new address. And so that's also another kind of coaching point. If any of your contact information changes, you'll want to notify them. So. With that, we are having a work session and a regular meeting on April 19th, okay? The work session will be the housing needs analysis update. So Eco Northwest, our consultant, will be giving us an overview, giving you an overview of that project before you conduct a public hearing on it, okay? And the public hearing would be in May, probably, probably June, depending on the timing of the notices and everything. And I think that's all the future business, Fawma?
If I may add, we also working on updating the planning commission webpage on the city website. And one of the things that we are asking is a group photo for the planning commission, but we only have three present today. So when we have all planning commission members present, we'll be taking the group photo. Thank you.
Well, I was gonna suggest that we use that new AI thing. What is that? Do you said today? Yeah, Chat GPT, but the picture Joel Hessel that came up didn't, wasn't the same. I'm totally kidding. Yeah, I'm totally kidding. I, I think that you, you can, you, you've got full licensure here and how you'd like to represent yourselves. Just, just remember what goes on the internet usually doesn't go away. So. With that, commissioners, or anything else before I hand it back to Chair Hessel to adjourn the meeting? All right, Chair Hessel, it's yours. Okay, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.